19070, Committee of the Whole Meeting Wednesday, October 11, 2023 at 6:00 PM is called to order. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President of Affairs.
President.
Councilor Carravial, Councilor Carravial is absent. Councilor Collins, Councilor Knight, Councilor Knight is absent. Councilor Scarpelli, Scarpelli is absent. Councilor Sang. President Morell.
Present, four present, three absent. The meeting is called to order. There will be a meeting of the Medford City Council Committee of the Whole on Wednesday, October 11, 2023 at 6:00 PM in the Medford City Council Chamber on the second floor of Medford City Hall via Zoom. The purpose of the meeting is to discuss Paper 19070, the proposed tree ordinance. The city council has invited tree warden Agnew Tudin, DPW Commissioner Tim McGivern, and Acting Building Commissioner Bill Fordy to attend this meeting. For further information, aides and accommodations, contact the city clerk at 781-393-2425. Sincerely yours, Nicole Morell, Council President. So as a notice said, we're here to discuss the tree ordinance, proposed draft ordinance. The last time we met, the main motions we took was to actually separate the ordinance that exists of the proposed ordinance into three different sections. That would be establishing a tree committee, the public shade trees, and the private shade trees. And also one large motion was that regarding the private shade trees, Commissioner Fordy would offer us a red line or just updated draft, basically outlining what, in his expertise and also just the ability of the city to enforce an ordinance, what he thought was possible. So I'm happy to read through that as it's the first time having it before us. But Commissioner Fordy, I don't know if you want to give us a brief summary of that before I read it?
Are we there? Okay, very good. Yep, thank you. Yes, again, thank you, Madam President. So I made a commitment to this body to make an attempt at dividing the ordinance. One of the things I saw in the first draft was that the conflict between the public and private way is something that probably need to be separated. So what I did was I redlined the original draft that I had and basically added language in that would would enforce tree mitigation on private property. In my experience with other zoning ordinances, there was a dimensional requirement for lot size, mostly in commercial, the number of parking spaces and how many trees per parking space and so forth. Here, the ordinance that I've proposed here basically just outlines a very minimal dimensional requirement for when someone wants to improve a property. I think what you'll find here in Medford mostly, you're not going to see a lot of rebuild. You're going to see a lot of remodeling and revamping of different properties. And so my thing is being able to regulate this by right in the zoning ordinance, I think, will achieve at least the goals that are probably sought out in private property ownership. Obviously, the city doesn't want all the trees cut down, you know, and without mitigation. And so I've attempted to kind of mitigate this in a schedule of the number of trees that are first, you know, that are taken down and what is to be replaced. These numbers probably need to go back. Alicia had provided me, the planning director, Alicia Hunt, had provided me with a document from the Environmental Tree Committee, the Energy and Environment Committee back in 2018, and they made some recommendations. I would strongly recommend that this go to them to look at some of the ratios that I have here. Specifically, what I've done with this is I've directed the building commissioner to have charge over the mitigation of trees on most single and two-family projects. This would be something other than what would be required for special permits. So if you're going for a site plan review, that tree, that tree schedule will be mitigated and promulgated by the planning board. Same with the ZBA. If the ZBA sought out to, you know, have trees provided as part of their ruling on a particular special permit or dimensional variance, then they have the ability to be able to do that. So it excludes anything outside of a special permit. So this is just projects that would be dimensionally controlled by the building department. I was able to take some of the language out that would concern public ways, trees on public ways. I did add some language in there about, you know, emergency removal of trees that are endangering a structure, you know. If, you know, I try to put in some safeguards so that someone just can't come in and say, "Well, the tree's not safe. It doesn't look good. I'm not going to keep it." You know, you're actually required to have an arborist come in and certify that the tree is not viable or can't be saved. And then at that point, there would be, you'd have permission to take that tree down. In addition to that, I've also given the option of a tree mitigation fund, which basically if a person, say, either didn't have the room on their lot or it wasn't conventional, by some means, they would be able to make a mitigation payment. In lieu of that, I think that possibly that may be something that might have to go for some type of hearing, whether that be in front of the tree committee, whether that be to the tree warden. You know, I would direct that to another authority. I wouldn't make that determination as a building commissioner, wouldn't expect that from anybody else. But I was thoughtful in the process of just trying to make this somewhat dimensionally controlled. And so the only comment I had from the mayor's office was that they just want to make sure that the process in, you know, in creating this and passing it is a public process and that there's been plenty of public input on the matter. Obviously, it's been advertised tonight, but I can make this draft available or it'll be part of the public record as of now anyway. So, you know, certainly I would be open to any comments. But that's really all I have for now, so.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Yeah, I think definitely we'll follow up and get this up on the council drive. And then I'm sure there'll be some motions coming up from tonight as far as getting in front of some other groups, one being the energy environment, tree folks. I'm sure Trees Medford would have some comments that they'd want to add as well as just sending an updated draft if we so move to get some comments from other department heads as well. So I'm just reminding folks on the call that if and when this is reported out of committee, then it would go on our regular agenda. It would have to be voted on and that would go, as it's an ordinance, it would have three hearings as well. So there's a whole process and I think we've been, as the paper starts with the number 19, we've been trying, we've been at this process for a number of years at this point. So there's been many bites of the apple, but hopefully we start to move this forward. So I'm happy to read this as we just got this shared around our inboxes this morning, but I don't know if the councils have any questions for the commissioner before we get into that. Thank you. Vice President of Affairs.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Commissioner. I guess my only questions are, do, it seems, obviously, the private one is a significant change. Do you have any comments on the public way or the committee, the tree committee? Or did you just restrict your comments to the trees on private property?
Yeah, sure. I stayed in my lane. And so the zoning ordinance specifically restricts private property or regulates private property. And so I didn't really talk about encroachments onto the public way and so forth. I thought I would kind of leave that for the tree warden, you know. But, yeah, this is, this is all like if I was going to take in a building permit and there were a number of trees on the property, I would make the determination by count, by size, you know, would it, you know, would you be able to save it? Would, are you taking it down and what are you putting back? And if you're not putting back, then maybe you need to go pay a mitigation fee or maybe you need to go for hearing or whatever it might be.
Got it. Yeah, and I think I just, I wanted to say that because now that we've split them up into three ordinances, the zoning ordinance had me to an even higher bar, requiring a two-thirds majority and, you know, public hearings and it would probably go to CD Board. And that's after we sent it to Energy and Environment. So there'd be an extensive public process.
Right, I would think so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Yeah, and I think the, all of this, the previous version had comments from KP Law in its earlier form, as well as Commissioner McGivern and Warden Tudin had reviewed it and offered some comments. So there's still some comments existing from them on the tree committee establishment paper, as well as the public trees, which we can always get into later tonight, if we so decide. So I will read this. I'll share my screen and I'll read, I'm just going to read the changed portions of this since the previous portions have been shared a number of times. A lot of this is definitions that were previously shared. So I will just read changed portions of this. All right, we should be just seeing, are we seeing the tree ordinance? Yes, thank you. Just making sure we're not looking at any other documents. Okay, so going through, so this is the private property tree protection and preservation ordinance, and this is reflecting changes and updates as made by Commissioner Fordy on the previous draft that we've been looking at for a few meetings now. So going into caliper, so that, under definitions, well, I'll just read the intent too, as you start. So the intent and purpose, this section regulates the removal of trees on private property in the city of Medford. A mature tree canopy maintains the natural beauty of Medford for all to enjoy today and in the future generations and protects the community in critically important ways. It reduces energy consumption and ambient summertime temperatures, air pollution, flooding, and soil erosion. It provides privacy, absorbs noise, and boosts mental health. It supports wildlife and increases resilience to climate change. Protecting the city's tree canopy is thus an essential community function. And I do want to say there's been a lot of people who have helped to write this first draft that is now being edited as well, not the least of which is Trees Medford, as well as folks on the Energy and Environment Committee as well. So under caliper, we just have the update of diameter of a tree trunk. An inch is measured 12 inches above the ground for trees, up to and including a 10-inch diameter and 24 inches above the ground for larger trees. The code enforcement officer is defined as the building commissioner or their designee, and construction permit is defined as a building permit issued by the building department allowing construction, demolition, or renovation of buildings and structures on a parcel of land. And then adding, going into the definition for construction, any activity which affects trees, tree zones, or is within the drip line and that requires a building permit or trench permit, including driveways, retaining walls, solar installation where trees are removed, site work on foundations, underground utilities, excavation, grading, and paving construction, or alteration of a structure or structure where the drip zone of a tree would be affected. Any vegetation within five feet of a structure is excluded. I'm going to drip line, which is a vertical line running through the outermost portion of the crown of a tree where the branches are five inches or greater and extending to the ground. Pruning has been added to be defined as the act of removing, trimming, or looping any portion of a tree up to a maximum of 50% of branches greater than five inches in diameter that is overgrown or possesses a risk to persons or structures. Removal is the act of removing a tree, which includes removal of the stump by pulling from the earth or grinding it to a level below grade and safe. Replacement trees are trees planted or relocated by or on behalf of the resident owner or contractor to mitigate approved tree removal, which are a minimum of three-inch caliper. Resident owner is identified as the legal owner of a property subject to this section who primarily resides at the property in which trees are disturbed for more than six months in a calendar year. Tree protection replacement and mitigation plan is a plan submitted to the building commissioner or designee for approval prior to the commencement of demolition and/or construction on a property which trees defined in this section are located. Tree removal permit is a permit issued by the building department for removal of trees based on the appropriate application process on privately owned property. Undeveloped land is defined as a parcel of land or portion thereof that has remained undisturbed from construction activity or maintenance for more than 15 years. Applicability, the provisions of this section shall apply to the following activity on privately owned land. Removal of any tree with a caliper of 10 inches or greater at breast height for any reason. Construction, alteration, and demolition of a structure, parcel, accessory building, retaining wall, fence, or other structure where the removal of trees is necessary. Alteration of any portion of a lot or parcel for the purposes of expanding activity area or cleared open space for leisure outdoor activities, space. Removal of any tree 10 inches or greater in diameter at breast height or portion thereof. And going to a schedule for mitigation, replacement, mitigation, and true replacement shall be in accordance with the following schedule. Removal of one tree is 10 to 15 inches equals two trees of three-inch caliper. Removal of one tree of 15 to 30 inches equals three trees of three-inch caliper. Removal of one tree 30 inches and above equals four trees of three-inch caliper. Removal of multiple trees of any size or greater listed above are subject to a fee in accordance with the following schedule. The total clearing of a parcel land above 7,000 square feet is a $1,000 payment to the tree mitigation fund. The total clearing of a parcel containing 7,000 to 20,000 square feet is a $2,500 payment to the tree mitigation fund. And more than 20,000 square feet of total lot clearing is subject to slight plan review by the CDB in accordance with Chapter 94, Section 94-11.7. Resident owners must apply for a permit to remove trees from the property in which they reside for purposes of maintaining conditions near any structure. Protected trees as defined by this section are subject to review and approval from the tree warden. If in the opinion of the tree warden that the trees to be removed are significant, they shall refer the proposed tree cutting removal to the tree preservation committee. Tree removal activity exempt from this section is a tree that poses an imminent risk of falling branches, rotten trunk base, or other indicators of failure as determined by a certified arborist. Removal of any tree or portion thereof for purposes of gathering sunlight for photovoltaic solar panel systems or arrays, trees damaged by storms or other natural causes. Protected and significant trees, trees that are 75 years or older as determined by a certified arborist or the tree warden shall be inventoried and preserved to the extent feasible, whether by resident owner or contractor or group of the property. If in the determination of the tree warden, a tree should be preserved, the tree warden shall refer the applicant to the tree committee for a public hearing. The tree committee shall hold a public hearing within 30 days of receipt of application to determine the significance of the tree. Upon final decision, the tree committee shall provide a decision in writing to the building commissioner and tree warden within 21 days of the closing and determination of the tree committee. The building commissioner or their designee shall enforce the provisions of this section in accordance with 94-11.0. Determinations by the building commissioner or their designees are specific to byright permits. Special permits and site plan review by the CD Board shall carry provisions of this section by order of the zoning board of appeals, the community development board, and the city council. Do we have any questions or discussion from councils at this time? As are Collins.
Thank you for walking us through the new sections. Thank you so much for all your feedback on this draft. Your perspective is really appreciated here. I was, just quickly, could you walk us through your thinking for the new section underneath new construction or alteration of a partial or structure relating to the the standards for replacing removed trees of certain calipers with other trees? As well as your thinking behind the fee schedule for total clearing of lots based on square footage? My, I kind of want to fact check this. Is this to set up a fee schedule for clear cutting of lots that are not so large as they go immediately, just like plan review?
So a person with what I was able to write here, a person who was clear cutting an undeveloped lot, okay, there is a certain number of trees that probably are going to be lost. And, you know, the mitigation fund can be set at any rate. I think the principle of having a certain fee is obviously so that the monies that are forwarded there should be a special revenue account and should be designated to the tree preservation committee as such as it may be formed. And then that tree committee can make a determination as to where and how they want to use that money, whether it be planting trees in, you know, in the city center, whether they be at a park, or whether they decide to maybe help out a person who has to get rid of trees, but, you know, may want more trees on their private property. Very similar to, you know, having, well, I'm sorry, not similar to, but, but the tree committee having that kind of, you know, that kind of control over the fund, I think is probably the best suited people. What I tried to be mindful about was we don't want to stall a project for any significant amount of time. I mean, we have other ordinances that need to be adhered to, such as historic, such as, you know, the regulations in stormwater management and all these things take time. What this would require is a person who, let's just say, a person wanted to take over a property that was overgrown, abandoned. That person would provide us with a site plan showing any kind of site improvement. It would have the, it would have the trees already on there, similar to what you'd find in a conservation commission notice of intent, something like that. The trees need to be identified and inventoried on a site plan. The mitigation plan would be part of that proposed site plan. In smaller cases where there's not going to be a complete site redevelopment, let's just say somebody just wants to come in, cut some of the vegetation off the house, trim a couple of trees, get the branches off the roof. They should be able to do that by right without any significant charges or lost time. So we don't want to, we don't want to do the opposite of creating housing. We want to make sure that we incentivize it. And this ordinance speaks to just kind of the, you know, the everyday business that the building department might handle. I think that bigger projects that require, you know, I don't, I don't see that a person should be able to just come in and clear cut a lot that otherwise has been, you know, vegetated for decades and all of a sudden, you know, the first complaint we get from a person from an abutter is that, oh, my God, they're cutting down every tree. You know, they're clear cutting it. And a lot of cities and towns don't have regulations regarding that. And so, you know, in a case like that, that might be something that would require notification. Perhaps maybe a, you know, maybe the tree committee might be the deciding body on that. If you're going to clear cut a lot, you have to go to the tree committee. They would, they would assess a determination on the fee and then that permit would be issued separately, you know, tree removal permit. So there are some things to be worked out here, some complicated things that probably getting down to the nitty gritty, I think it's going to require a little bit more study. But my feeling about it is that in lieu of not, you know, planting trees, you know, a mitigation fund or fee can be set up, you know, easily. It just has to be kind of enumerated by a person who has a different view. I'm looking at the enforcement and the zoning. I think that the value of the trees, I set the calipers of the trees a little bit less than what was in here originally to try and maybe mitigate some of the hearing requirements and the special permit requirements that an applicant may have to go through, you know, the clearing of vegetation near a house, I think is something that should be exempt. But I think the general idea is that obviously we're trying to preserve the city's canopy and promote the green, you know, the green initiative here. And so I don't know that I answered your question. I kind of got off track a little bit, but was I clear on something or?
No, that's helpful. I think just two clarifying questions, follow that up in the context, I think is really helpful. In this section, just to make certain I have it right, is the thought that in these cases where this ordinance is coming into effect, say, for example, removal of one tree 10 to 15 inches. So does the mitigation, the replanting happen at the same time as a fee if both conditions are met? Or is it like one or the other? Like if you're taking down one or two trees, then you have to replace them with the according number of trees of a certain size? And if that happens to happen in the context of clearing a lot, the fee is charged as well?
Yeah, it wouldn't be, a fee would be in lieu of not replacing a tree.
Gotcha.
So that would definitely be one for the other.
Okay.
So in cases where you have a very small lot.
It doesn't stack, it's one for the other.
Yeah, if you had a very small lot and you had to, you had to put in two trees, but you didn't want to do it, then you would pay a fee, you know, a certain, a certain fee for mitigation of that. Here, it doesn't give you the option of either putting in a tree or paying a fee because a lot of times a builder doesn't want to be bothered with a tree, especially if it's going to die in six months or a year if it's not properly planted, you know. So I didn't really give a mitigation fee. This is in cases where it doesn't make any sense to, you know, to replace the trees or mitigate them, you know what I mean? The fees right now are only set up for lot clearing. They're really not for anything else. And that, those monies help to pay for tree mitigation elsewhere in the city.
Thank you, that's helpful. And then just one more thing and just let me know if I'm sort of getting ahead of where we are in the process here. But I think the biggest point of, well, confusion for me right now is looking at my notes to make sure I've phrased this. Or I think the thing that I want to get organized in my mind is what parts of this are regulating in these sections? Are we talking about projects that are not already anyway going to go to site plan review because of other aspects of the project?
Correct.
Where does this process kick in versus where are we assuming that a tree mitigation process will happen under another site plan review process that's going to happen anyway?
Sure, so this is dimensional like anything else in the zoning ordinance. When the building commissioner is directed to issue a permit for a certain dimensional requirement, whether that be a maximum or a minimum, that would fall within the purview of this ordinance. Anything outside of this ordinance, the last paragraph pretty much describes that anything that's got to go for site plan review, which would be any significant commercial property, any commercial project, you know, that would fall into the category of the 25,000 square feet, that sort of thing, that would be something outside of it. So this, this does mitigate most of the byright projects that, and even if they went to the zoning board of appeals, say, for a variance, it would not, it would not alleviate or preclude anything in this ordinance. So unless the ZBA could give a dimensional variance for not planting trees, this ordinance would be enforced.
Great, thank you so much for clarifying that, I appreciate it.
Yeah, of course.
Do we have, Councilor Sang, or any questions from the public at this point? I know we have some folks from Trees Medford, as well as the Energy and Environment Committee on the call.
Councilor Collins's questions basically reflect mine, so I feel, I feel okay.
Thank you. Do we want to spend any more time on this draft? Do we want to revisit the other two sections and, oh, go to, here we go, we got Loretta. Loretta, name and address for the record, please. Should see, oops, sorry. At the same time, you should see the unmute box again, I'll stop touching, there we go.
Hi, Loretta James Sherman Place.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner. I didn't get to read your proposal, draft, but it was very informative. I'd like to read it more in detail and submit comments in the future. But there were a couple of things, and it's also for the city council to hear too, that could be adjusted. And I'm curious, so I just want to bring out some points. And the 10-inch diameter was one of them that I heard. And the average across the Massachusetts with 21 to 25 ordinances is for tree preservation is generally eight inches. There's a few cities that have six inches, so that's one comment. Also, like I said, I didn't get to read in detail, I'm very detail oriented, your proposal, but I was curious about if the total aggregate of all trees that would be considered to be removed on private property was in your proposed draft? Because it is in some of the ordinances in Massachusetts. For example, if someone has six trees on their property and they're all, say, eight inches, this is something for the committee and city council to consider that, oh, they could be removed if they're less than 75 years old. So that's a lot of trees. So that's something to consider is the total aggregate of all trees to be removed on a property. And as you said very clearly, and I did like that, this is not to stall or stop development. It's to enhance the city and preserve mature trees that probably cannot be replaced in our lifetime. And also prevent flooding, which comes back to the city because when we get the calls and the city has to pay for it, and it's just a cycle of our taxes will have to go up to mitigate flooding and buy more trees. So the other thing is, just a few more things that I wanted to mention, and I think you did, Commissioner, is a landscape design plan should be submitted with any permits to remove trees to see what's there and tag, you know, identify the trees and also submit another plan with a proposal of what they're going to, the property owner is going to do. And then the other thing was, it said, I think you said two-story homes? And I was like, well, what happened to three-story homes? So that's a question. And the other thing I wanted to bring out, and this is important to consider, is that... moving forward, depending on funding, it's very important that you have a certified arborist to review anything in particular, these, um, removal of trees, um, to make a determination. I'm not sure where this would fit in, um, but if they're a certified arborist, um, their determination can be enforced moving forward. If it has to be.
Thank you, Laura.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, no, so, uh, to address, um, um, the concerns of the constituent, I wha- what I've tried to do here is balance, um, the needs of the city for construction and housing and, and kind of what makes sense uh, in a, in a, strike a balance with both, um, development and with, uh, the need for tree preservation. Being on the Conservation Commission and the Town of Holbrook as the chairman for a good number of years, we, we have a bylaw that, uh, restricts any tree removal of, uh, 50% uh, tree removal within, um, 50 feet or 100 feet of a, a buffer zone to require tree mitigation placement. And so I, I do understand the need for, uh, preservation of the tree canopy. However, when, when vegetation becomes, you know, um, sizable, um, it also poses threats um, to the structure. Uh, and so the balance, I think, that I try to strike here is that taking most of the determination out of the process by at least having some mitigation on private property, I think is the goal of this ordinance. This isn't really to, this isn't an end-all and, um, like a complete package. This is just one portion, I think, of the ordinance that I saw the need to divide up and so that it could be regulated a little bit tighter and a little bit, um, with a little less, um, discretion. Um, you know, if it's, if it's issued, if it's issued by permit and by right in a dimensional table, I, I think it makes more sense. Uh, and it accomplishes more for the city by having this, you know, this mitigation. No matter how minor or small it might be or how much bigger it could be, uh, I just feel as though this is a balance that could be stricken with both development and with, with the city's needs for, uh, for greens, for green space. So, um, you know, this is, this is about where I stand. And again, um, this is just suggested language. This is not my proposal. Uh, I was just helping out the city council. So just to be clear, for the public record, I don't endorse or oppose anything. I'm just here to kind of make sense and provide guidance on what I know about the ordinance and what might be able to work. So.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you very much for that clarification, Joey. Yeah, he did us a big favor because I think, um, it's an ordinance that we absolutely wanna put everything in and it maybe got to a point where it was a little too cloudy and with the crux of all of our ordinance that we pass, right, is can it be enforced? Is this something we actually have the ability to enforce or make sure people understand? So I appreciate the Commissioner for giving your point, Loretta. Um, I'm absolutely sure we'll, you know, someone will motion or I will encourage them to motion to make sure we share this with our friends in the Energy and Environment Committee for some comments as well as Trees Medford, because I know there's a lot of folks like yourself that have a lot of knowledge in this area that your comments would be, uh, very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Uh, going to Bob Payne. I'll mute you and just name an address for the record, please.
Yes, Robert Payne, address is 15 West Street. And I'm also the chair of the, current chair of the Energy and Environment Committee. Can you, can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear.
Okay, great. I, I noticed there was an addition of a definition for pruning and, um, maybe I didn't catch it. Is that then pruning is exempt from need for permitting? I, I believe that was the intent of that definition. Hopefully that's the case. Also, there used to be, as I recall in previous version, uh, a fee for removal of various sizes of trees that are protected and, and does that not change then? I, I, I didn't necessarily see any comment on, on whether that was changed or not. So I, I would be looking for that when I, when I get to see the whole thing, but it would seem to me that clear cutting a a lot might, you might wanna know, well, how many trees are you cutting? I mean, it shouldn't be a flat fee. You'd think it'd be proportional to the number of trees that are being cut. Rather than just a, just one, one, uh, number fits all in a lot. So I'm, I'm a little perplexed about that.
Thank you, Bob. Again, I think 10, the Commissioner's previous points. I think these are actually, these are all very, um, important points and, and stuff for us to consider. And I think this is, the Commissioner gave us a framework to work off of. So I think that's a I, for one member of the council, think that's a, a great point and something that we should, um, consider looking at.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak at this time? Counselors, do we want to look at the pre-committee draft again or do we wanna stay on this? Thoughts? Folks have any motions at this time or we're eager to wait for comments from, uh, written comments from people?
I'm also happy to look at it.
Madam Chair, I know that you get, one of the things you're planning to do is, uh, refer it to us. I just, um, wanna make sure that we technically refer it to my office. I understand very clearly from Commissioner Forty that what he wants to do is regulate sort of through his office, things that are by right and then refer to the planning board, the things that are, um, site plan review. And I wanna just make sure that there's not a gap here. Um, because site plan review looks at, um, new residential that is six units or greater. But if it's under six units, it's not. And if it's just a renovation, it might not ever go to site plan review. And so like, what if this is a a large property, you know, that exists and they just decide to cut down trees on it? We should just make sure that the language in here, if the intention is, we'll send it to the CD board to review that. Or if that actually falls under some of this, right? Like what if you have a large, you know, I'm thinking some of our larger developers have that property. So we just wanna make sure that we're not missing any things. And technically, site plan review looks at what are you building? And it is not illegal in Medford for somebody to have a large parcel and to clear it before they ever appro- apply for site plan review. So we wanna make sure that the language there ensures that it doesn't, that like, they can't clear cut the property that's over 20,000 square feet until and after going through site plan review. Just wanna make sure that we, we look at this, at the wording is what we intended to be. So I don't have any technical, like, suggestions for what that should be, but I just wanted to flag that those are some of the things we should be looking at.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point about clear cutting because I do think one of the things that originally prompted the introduction of this paper was the clear cutting of the law on Winthrop.
Yeah.
Where still nothing has been built.
Right. And technically, for example, that property has not even gone to site plan review yet. What it went to was subdivision. And so it, they got permission to build a road and subdivide that, but there's nothing in our ordinance that prevented the clear cutting. And as a side, nothing that prevented or regulated any blasting. We should put that on our radar as well, um, as that's coming cost effective.
Thank you. And then I just, so I just wanna make sure I'm understanding that you're recommending referring to your office and you will help us identify any gaps that there may be.
Yeah, I, I think that we, we need to, that the planners in my office need to take a look at it. In, at the same time that you send it to the energy committee, like, I don't think we should wait on one or another. I think we should all look at it because I think it's helpful for the members of the committee who I know are on the call because some of them just spoke, are aware that we'll look at it for technical gaps like that, but we're still looking to them for the research that they did on, some of the things they were talking about. I, I kinda wonder if $1,000 is a right number. I know that the tree warden has talked before about we get good rates, we could plant, buy and plant a small tree for $300. So that's the equivalent of planting three trees with the city budget, like for a public street tree. Is that really the right amount for clear cutting? A 7,000 square foot lot, so 5,000 square foot is the minimum to build a single family house. So if they were to take that lot, clear cut it and build a million dollar house on it, is $1,000 the right amount? On the other hand, we've always been trying to balance this against, you know, the neighbor behind me just cut down a gigantic tree. She, like, was so guilty about it. But she's like, the arborist came to prune it and showed me how it was, you know, it was not in good shape. But other neighbors cut down trees because they just feel like it. So.
Thank you. Much appreciated. Uh, going to Amanda on Zoom. Amanda, name and address for the record, please.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Amanda Bowen, 57 Madison Street. Um, uh, I just, uh, wanted to mention a couple of things that, uh, that, uh, that I didn't see here. I'm not absolutely clear that whether we're talking about whether there is any provision anywhere for trees, trees that are not involved in a construction project. It kinda looked like there was a place where it just said any tree getting cut down, but, um, but I hope that we will include, um, um, provisions for, um, trees being cut down that don't involve a construction project. And that has to be go someplace else because obviously it's, it won't go to the building, building, um, uh, committee. The other thing is penalties. What about if someone does, ignores the process and cuts them down? What, where are the penalties? And, um, and I didn't see that anywhere. So those were my two, um, comments.
Thank you, Amanda. Yeah, and to your first point, that is the intent. So, and again, we'll make sure that any gaps that may appear.
Yes, um, Madam President, so, um, the, 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 the fines for this would be any violation of the zoning ordinance at all. And again, specifically talking about this particular section in a box. Uh, the other thing that I, I heard too, I, I just wanna make sure that I'm clear on this. The, the $1,000 fee that I proposed for clearing a lot is just a nominal fee. It really should be up to a committee. There should be a tree count. There should be a mitigation fee that's fair. You don't wanna charge somebody $10,000 or $15,000 to clear cut a lot if it's part of a development, you know? But, you know, $1,000, I agree, is probably, uh, probably loose. And so that's why the public input here is good. I, I think it needs to just be, you know, carefully thought out as to what, what fees are gonna be able to get digested, obviously, in balance with the construction. But, um, the, the fees for the ordinance, any violation of the zoning ordinance are $100 the first day, or 50 the first day, 200 the next day, and 300 each day thereafter. Um, each violation constitute a separate offense. So, so we do have that authority in the zoning ordinance. And again, I didn't put the finishing touches on the language. Uh, I do agree strongly that there should be, there should be language in there that says that no tree shall be removed unless it's in accordance with the following section. Yeah, you know what I mean? So that, that is probably something in the preamble that, um, should be added. So.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak? Bob, I don't know if you put your hand up again or if it's still up.
Uh, no, I'm gonna lower it.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion from counselors at this point? Counselor Collins?
Um, just to say that I appreciate this feedback from our department heads and also from Energy and Environment Committee members' residents. I think for me, this is kind of exactly the point with this ordinance that I want us to be at, which is, you know, it is complicated. We've already broken it into three sections. And with this especially saying, are we sure that, at the point that we're trying to condition and regulate and provide for mitigation here, we have some instances where that's provided for by site plan review. We have somewhere that's provided for by this process, somewhere that's provided for by dimensional and just making sure that we're catching all of the circumstances that we do wanna be regulating in this. And I also do appreciate the discussion about, are those fees where they should be? Obviously, going too high, we don't wanna disincentivize development. Going too low, we don't want to, you know, egregiously undervalue our trees. So I think we're heading in a good direction with this. Thank you.
Thank you. President Barris?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, and I think Director Hunt kinda cleared up most of what I was thinking around the 20,000 square foot lot and site plan review. And you answered some more of this question. I guess my, my question is just the mechanism here, right? Is it? There's, there's two pieces to my question. So, um, if we're removing multiple trees of a greater size, total clearing of a parcel of land, that's happening through a permit and they're paying a fee. What if someone just clears without a permit?
Um, I, I, so I think, I think that, um, and again, the language should be in the preamble that, uh, you know, that, that no tree shall be removed, um, that's not in pursuit of construction. You know what I mean? So, um, we, we've had this problem statewide. Any, any jurisdiction I've ever worked, and this has always been a problem. It's always a kind of a, you know, kind of an empty spot. And, um, it's never been enumerated. So I think that, um, you know, no tree shall be removed unless it's in accordance with the following section of this ordinance. So I think it should be made very clear, um, in that first, um, you know, in that first paragraph, you know?
And then is the recourse, if there's a violation, non-criminal, uh, disposition? Or is it like denial of a future permit for construction or how, how would that, like, cause that's just, I'm wondering what the?
Yeah, so, um, a stop work order should be issued immediately, um, upon tree, you know, if, cause the first thing that's gonna happen is someone's gonna get out the chainsaws and see the trucks pulling up and we're gonna get a call. So the first thing is to order a, you know, a cease and desist right away. Um, and, and I would say that if a person is not aware that they don't know what, what it is and, and they just started and they're like, okay, we'll wrap it up and go home, uh, then probably no punishment might be, um, might be ordered. Um, if what I envision with a lot clearing, what I envision with that is either, uh, very similar to Director Hunt um, saying about, uh, you know, review by the CD board and/or uh, perhaps a, uh, maybe the tree committee could have some authority about clear cutting uh, lots that otherwise have been undeveloped and, and are, you know, um, you know, that have, have foliated. You know, that might be something that the tree committee might consider in, in a public hearing, you know? Um, that they might hold a hearing within 21 days of an application, uh, very similar to, um, the historic commission, you know? And they, and they might determine and assess a value of the trees that are going to be clear cut. Uh, you know, in, in that proposal, in that hearing, a person might propose, hey, listen, I'm gonna put in 10 trees of 3-inch caliper and, um, I'm gonna pay this much. And then the committee will say, yeah, okay, that's good, you know? And then that's a condition of, of the building permit.
Okay.
So yeah, anything should segue into construction. Uh, cause otherwise, why clear a lot unless there's construction, right? It, it makes the most sense, you know? Uh, for any other purpose, I, I would say that even if you're clearing it to put a tennis court in, um, that's still construction. Yeah. So, yeah. Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Going back to Loretta on Zoom.
Hi, um, one suggestion that, that's very clear, um, Commissioner and City Council is, um, the occupancy permit would not be issued until everything's mitigated.
Correct.
So I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Any other discussion from counselors? I know, so we so we do have two other portions that we're considering. I do wonder if it's worth reporting this out and getting comments as that may impact at least the, the tree committee establishment, but I'm also happy to review it at this time if folks just wanna lay eyes on it again, as we haven't looked at it again, uh, for a few months at this point. Yeah. The public tree and the, oh, sorry, going to Counselor Sanger, um, the public tree and the tree committee. We do have some comments from the public tree and Commissioner, we're giving couldn't be here tonight. So I do wonder if that's just something safe for when we can continue those conversations.
You all set with me or? You all set with me?
We're good for you.
Okay.
Now, Counselor Sanger does have, I'm gonna go to Counselor Sanger. He may have a question for you. Counselor Sanger.
Uh, yeah, so I guess with the tree commission or committee ordinance, I think most of it looks pretty solid. I am curious about the point where we're not offering compensation for it. I just wonder, and, um, our city staff might know better. Um, I would just wonder if we would be able to recruit the talent that we're asking for in the ordinance without commission or, or without compensation? But I don't have as much experience on this specific, in this specific area. So I'm just curious what you all think.
Thank you for that. I think the question from Counselor Sanger, Director Hunt, I don't know if you could hear, just the last one standing at this point. It's just, as we're looking for people just the last one standing at this point, is just, as we're looking for people with specific qualifications for this, um, committee, if we think we could attract folks without, um, or, you know, should we establish a stipend for serving on this committee? Do we think that's essential to be able to attract someone like a certified arborist?
So I think there's sort of two different things. If you're asking a certified arborist to go out and evaluate trees, then there's an expectation that they get paid for that effort. Because it's, you know, you don't ask an art, you know, somebody to, a lawyer for legal advice pro bono, right? As a general rule. Um, so that's sort of the, the idea behind it. So, but it depends what we're asking, right? If the way this is written, this ordinance, I'm actually reading it that the private resident or contractor could hire a certified arborist who could then provide us with a report and they pay for it. It's not necessarily somebody on city staff, the way this is written right now, which is actually not a bad idea. You want to cut down a tree. I would hope that you're hiring a tree company that has a certified arborist who can give you a, a certified statement on it and put the burden on the person who wants to cut the tree. When we're talking about the committee and this tree committee that would review the presentations and decide if it's, um, of significant, um, honestly, we get experts in all of these fields that volunteer their time out of the love of the city. I don't think we'd have any trouble finding people who have levels of expertise to serve. I don't, I couldn't tell you that you would always have an arborist. It's like with the planning board, um, we often have city planners and transportation engineers and landscape designers, but we don't always have one of each on the board. The reason for compensation is fair and equitable treatment of people. And we have been looking at the idea that the boards and commissions should be compensated because we're asking people to come, give of their time. And for some people are privileged and they can just do that. And other people have to hire a babysitter and pay for transportation and miss work to do it. And so there should be fair and equitable compensation, $25 a meeting, $50 a meeting, so that somebody for whom it's a cost burden will serve just as equally as somebody for whom they make plenty of money and they, they can do it, you know, or they're retired or whatever. So the reason for doing it, I don't believe, in my opinion, looking at our boards and commissions, is we wouldn't otherwise get qualified people. Um, somebody who is a certified arborist does not serve on our tree committee for the $50 a meeting. They serve because they care about the community. But some people might need the $50 a meeting in order to make the time to attend the meetings or the ability to. So.
Thank you. I think that's helpful. I think we do have comments from Attorney Stein that said, perhaps you could list it as it being a preference to have, you know, a certified arborist, but it's not essential. And I do wonder if, I don't think it's in this language, um, just having the tree warden as an, as an ex officio member as well might also, you know?
Right. I don't, I don't have a copy of that in front of me. Um, I will tell you that the, I believe that the tree warden's position is a union position. And so there would be some considerations there as to how, um, when you ask somebody who is paid certain ways and is in the union to attend an extra meeting, an evening meeting, do they get time out of their day? You know, do we allow comp time for that? Or do they get a stipend for attending the meeting? Traditionally, the city of Medford has offered stipends to staff to support boards and commissions with that idea. But I just, having, frankly, having a professional on, you know, saying that the tree warden should be a member of that committee makes a lot of sense for an ex officio member. If you look at our boards and commissions across the board, there are many that have different positions. Usually they're department head positions than are members of the boards and commissions or are supposed to, like, my position step technically is the technical advisor to the community development board. I have a staff person who is paid a stipend to take their minutes, do their agenda, collect their, their applications and stuff like that. Um, so that actually is a consideration if they're gonna be receiving applications and they're gonna need staff support. Is there a stipend there for the staff person to receive those applications, attend an evening meeting, do the agendas in minutes? That's what we have been doing in the city of Medford.
Great. Thank you. Yeah. And I think revisiting this document, I think that the crux of the concern from Attorney Stein, which is making sure that this, this is not written in a way that the tree committee would usurp any of the powers of the tree warden. So I think number one, it would need a little bit of updated language. But I think number two, if that were something we could work out, um, I think working at concert would certainly help to avoid kind of undermining or undoing the expertise and the, just the legally defined role of the tree warden. Uh, going to councillor Collins, if you still have it.
Oh, thank you. No, I, uh, Director Hunt, I appreciate you weighing in on this. I think, you know, I, I say this every time we talk about a border commission. It's, I pulled the opinion that we should be compensating all members of all boards and commissions just because it's the right thing to do. I think this is true of probably certainly all of our boards and commissions, but especially when we're talking about taking measures to, um, take care of the tree canopy in Medford, which this tree committee would be integral to. Holding that conversation in Medford and pushing it forward. We know that, um, you know, the distribution of the tree canopy in Medford is not equally distributed and that neighborhoods that have less trees tend to be poorer and less well-resourced. And I think it, it's worth stating that, um, you know, especially in this case, if we're going to have, um, people from well-treet neighborhoods in Medford as well as less-treet neighborhoods that are more vulnerable to, um, you know, heat island effect and other adverse effects of not having trees. We want to make sure that all those perspectives are on the tree committee. Another reason to work towards a place where all of our board and commission members are compensated so that that equity, um, and representativeness is, is, uh, better insured. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, I think I found, I think I have a copy of what you might be looking for, the version, looking at the version with, um, comments from Tim, the deputy commissioner and, um, the attorney. So the, the line about the members of the tree committee would serve without compensation, my recommendation would be to, at the very least, we strike that line and be silent on that matter so that we are, uh, falling back on how do we handle all boards and commissions as a group, rather than putting it into individual ones. I don't, we have a couple of boards and commissions that receive compensation for the members. And I don't believe that it's actually in their ordinances that say they receive compensation.
Thank you.
I would be happy to, um, sponsor that motion.
So you have the motion from councillor Sang to, uh, in the draft of the tree committee, uh, strike this line that says that Medford Tree Committee members shall serve without compensation. Do I have a second? Second, my councillor Collins. Uh, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. And I do think it may be worth, um, just, if folks want to, councillor Collins, if we want to make a motion to perhaps send us back to the tree warden again, and now that's separate, to see any comments. Or someone wants to just study it and study it against, uh, the tree warden as defined at the MGL level as well. Uh, councillor Collins, I go to you as we wait for the clerk to type that up.
Thank you. I was also going to, um, it, it sounded like we were floating, um, maybe taking out the language that said one must, one member must or shall, will hold the license as a certified arborist. I don't know if, um, if that's something that we can't guarantee happening all the time. I guess the question in my mind is if for a six-month, one-year period, there isn't a certified arborist on the, on the committee, what then, like legally, can the committee function? Is it in limbo until there's a certified arborist? Is that something we should potentially, um, strike or say we prefer for their, something to be encouraged but not, um, required for the functioning of the committee?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, we'll take councillor Sang's first.
Vice President Behrs. Councillor Kerviel is absent. Councillor Collins?
Yes.
Councillor Knight is absent. Councillor Scarpelli is absent. Councillor Sang?
Yes.
President Maron?
Yes. Wearing the affirmative zero and the negative three after the motion passes, we will strike that line from the draft. And then councillor Collins, um, you have a motion to update the language so that, um, it's not required. That, um, sorry, I want to make anyone dizzy with my track changes. It's not required. Go ahead.
Perhaps like, um, whenever possible, or we could just add two words, whenever possible, at least one member of the committee will hold.
Yeah, it, it's, Madam President, it's, um, preference shall be given to appointing residents. But I think there is a, a, a preference shall be given because the difference is that, that you're not seeing here this or this or that, right? So you're looking at a board, you're saying, um, uh, consideration, um, will be given such that at least one member, blah, 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 uh, to the extent possible, or to the extent that, uh, appropriate candidates are available and willing to serve. Because, I mean, we do actually run into with CPC, there's a requirement that members come from certain boards and commissions. And we do actually run in, that's state law, we can't change it. But we run into problems where you'll have a board and nobody on that board is willing to take on the extra commission of ser, or extra of serving on a second board. And then you, we actually run into a problem with like, somebody gets pressured to doing it. But if we're looking at the whole committed, community as a whole and saying, is there a certified arborist willing to do this? We could put the call out for it. But even if we know they exist in the city, nobody can make them serve.
Yeah, the CPC is preference, they're choosing position, persons for appointed positions. The mayorship of preference to those residents who have expertise and or demonstrated interest in open space, recreation, historic preservation, affordable housing, et cetera. So.
So I have, uh, based on what Director Hunt said, could be, consideration shall be given that at least one member of the committee will hold a license as a Massachusetts certified arborist or international certified arborist or similar certification, to the extent that appropriate candidates are available and willing to serve. So councillor Collins, you're gonna make, would like to make a motion that we update that line. Do you want it?
Yeah.
I can chat it to you. Sure. Consideration shall be given that at least one member of the committee will hold a license as a Massachusetts certified arborist. I can also just paste it to you in the chat. Okay. No, I can chat you. Just can't broadly chat.
Councillor Collins, we will update the language and says consideration shall be given that at least one member of the committee shall be a Massachusetts certified arborist.
Or international certified arborist or similar certification to the extent that appropriate candidates are available and willing to serve.
Madam Chair? Madam President, I believe, I'm not sure that it says here or in our ordinances anywhere that, um, members of the boards and commissions must be residents. I believe that we have a strong preference for that. But there, some communities will allow that certain number of seats must be residents. But if you need a particular expertise, what if there was a certified arborist who was willing to be on the committee? Who, you know, maybe his business is in Medford, but he lives in Malden or Boston. Do we need to actually write it in that that arborist? I think we would prefer to have a, a resident, but we'd be happy to have an arborist who doesn't live in the city if, if it's that or no arborist. And do we feel that that neat language needs to be in here? I do not believe that there's anything in our ordinances that says blanketly that you must be a, a resident. Some ordinances have written it in that you must be a resident.
Councillors, think of that. I mean, it's kind of off the cuff, but I I feel like in general where, to me, things get confusing with boards and commissions is where rules that may apply to all of them live in individual ordinances. So I think that it would be helpful to have that articulated overaringly as applying to all of our boards and commissions. I think that from like an implementation standpoint, it, my impression, this could be wrong. I don't manage boards or commissions, is that, um, when the question comes up, like, can we do this? It's helpful to have something in an ordinance to point to from a, like, how can we, who are we messaging this to do? How are we doing outreach here? So maybe it I'm thinking as well, if it's, if, if it's not prohibited, then it should be known that it's fine. But clearly that confusion comes up and the question comes up. You know, we're talking about this ordinance here, but I, I feel like it would be more clear if that was just stated as relating to all boards and commissions.
Right. So I guess what I'm thinking is that it doesn't say that blanketly in our zone, in our ordinances or in our charter, but maybe it will someday. And this might be a place where you might say that, um, residency is not required if necessary to fill this expertise. And that way, you're mildly implying that residency is required in general. Which I think is the city's preference. Honestly, I had somebody ask me this past weekend if, as a non-resident, they would be eligible to join, um, the Affordable Housing Trust. And so I just, I, and I said, you know, I, I don't know legally. I know that our preference is that you be a resident. So I, that's what I raised it.
Do you want to add that?
I think that language makes sense.
So we'll add the motion with that being, in addition to add to the end of that line, residency is not required if necessary to fill this expertise.
I would say Medford residency.
It was preferred, but not required.
If necessary to fill this expertise. And that would immediately follow the other sentence that, uh, we gave you that has to know to serve.
Yeah, the CPC ordinance again says, it does require CPC members to be domiciled in the city. But it's explicit because the rest of the ordinances, or it's not, there's not, certainly there's no charter provision for it.
It's, I was just thinking, it's simpler now to include the language in case our charter were to change and require and say that you need to be a resident to be in boards and commissions unless otherwise stated in the, in the ordinances.
Right. Unless otherwise stated in the ordinances, yeah.
I guess as we have this in front of us too, I'm being reminded of, I think that many areas are concerned to, um, where I think these first three is that it's too vague, working with the tree or warden on public tree hearings, including documentation of tree hearings. But tree hearings are very explicitly, that process is very explicitly outlined in MGL. I feel like something that may be worth striking or consideration. Same thing with ensuring that the city adheres to provisions. I think ensure is too vague of a word. And then the same thing with the following, the committee's work will include consideration of management. I think that might be too vague. I think the rest is, you know, working to develop a, and recommend a plan, work on annual reporting, promoting creation of manuals, promoting equity, engaging in projects. I think things like that make sense for this committee, I think is the, the intent. I do think some of this stuff may just sound a little too broad and run, um, against the state level definitions of what the role of the tree ward is in the process for, uh, public shade trees. Vice President Behrs?
I also have two other, I think linking back to the private draft, right? If the tree committee is gonna be considering and essentially approving mitigation plans for trees, you know, or if there's some sort of enforceable version of A and B here under duties. I certainly would want this to be, uh, the mayor's appointees to be confirmed by the council. I think, I mean, my general perspective is that even if it doesn't have those duties, it should be, uh, that mayor appointees are confirmed by the council. Um, but especially if there's any sort of real, um, you know, authority to decide on, to make determinations that affect.
Do you want to add language that?
Um, I think it's more just, if this is going out and coming back, I just want to put that out there, you know? I wonder if maybe the CD board is a better vehicle, for example, for the zoning-related private trees determinations for, you know, I don't know. I don't know what Director Hunt thinks of that. I certainly don't know what the CD board members think of that. But, um, yeah, I mean, I think if it's, if it's everything from C down.
Right.
You know, that's one thing. If it's having an active role in determining, um, mitigation plans, especially on private property, I think we need to add a level of due diligence here.
Yeah. I mean, it sounds like to me, if we may feel like we're in a place where we would want to send these three back out, or at least these two back out.
Yeah.
For comments and reconsider as, I think having a much more streamlined version from Commissioner Forty kind of maybe informs a little bit these other things. And also knowing we'll get more comments from folks as well.
Yeah, I'd be happy to move right now that.
Yeah, we have.
Oh, sorry. Yeah.
So we do have a motion on the floor from Counsel Collins, and that was to add the language that clarifies that, I'm just gonna, just gonna summarize. It would be nice to have an arborist, certified arborist or similar certification, but it's not required. And then also that if it is challenging to fill that role, resident, veteran residency is not required for that specific role on the committee. So on the motion of Counsel Collins, it's seconded by
Second.
Vice President Bears. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Bears.
Yes.
Counsel Kerryville on his absence. Counsel Collins.
Yes.
Counsel Knight, Counsel Scarpelli absent. Counsel Sank.
Yes.
President Roll.
Yes. Or in the affirmative, zero, and the negative three absent, motion passes. Vice President Bears. Actually, Counsel Sank, did you have something you wanted to add before we?
Um, I, I, I was just basically going to say, I agree with Vice President Bears on, on what he was saying. I agree with the due diligence part. I agree with the, the council approval votes. I wonder, I've heard some feedback that sometimes department heads are a bit more iffy on the council approval thing because of the time that it might take to, for us to approve. But I think it's reasonable that we can approve it in a pretty reasonable timeframe. And if there are concerns with that, I think we could put something in the ordinance to deal with it. But I agree with Vice President Bears' points.
Thank you. Vice President Bears.
Yeah, I was just going to make a motion to add the words subject to confirmation by majority vote of the city council after the word mayor in the first clause of two A.
So we have a motion from Vice President Bears to add the word subject to confirmation by the Bedford City Council after the word mayor in, under appointments, section A.
It is specifically, it's subject to confirmation by a majority vote of the city council.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, are you able to call the roll on that? Sorry, seconded by Counsel Collins.
Vice President Bears.
Yes.
Counsel Kerryville on his absence. Counsel Collins.
Yes.
Counsel Knight, Counsel Scarpelli absent. Counsel Sank.
Yes.
President Roll.
Yes. Or in the affirmative, zero, and the negative, uh, three absent, motion passes. Any further discussion or motions from the council?
Did we look at the? Sorry, I stepped out for a moment. Did we look at eighty-six, ninety-three in the public tree ordinance? There's still some.
Uh, we have not.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just wondering what our, I guess I could just read the committee, the whole report, if there were motions last time. It looks like tree removal permit. There's just application hearing process, approval criteria, protection of significant trees, prohibited activities in emergencies, and then the enforcement and penalties section are, are still blank, at least in the version that I'm looking at.
There was. Do you not have the man's in front of me?
Let me see if I can, I have. Oh, I said this last time.
So it's still another question?
Yeah, I said eighty-six, nine, four, and eighty-six, nine, five need to be updated.
Yeah, folks don't have any ideas of updating them now. We can save it for a future meeting.
The motion was that some sections B through G of eighty-six, ninety-three be combined and updated to reflect the processes and practices of the, of general law chapter eighty-seven. So I'll just let those motions stand. There's also one motion that passed to create a separate section of the ordinance to establish a tree fund. So I guess we should just figure out who, who should be doing these two things.
Right.
Yeah.
I think it was out. I think, you know, I think this is one of the times where we run up against the lack of in-house counsel where
Yeah.
historically, we would have worked with them on this, but we do not have that. So.
Yeah, maybe we could refer request that I don't, I don't, yeah, I'm not sure. I mean, enforcement and penalties, I would think KP Law could, outside council could do that. The tree removal permit process. I mean, it basically seems like what the motion we asked for last time was that the tree warden to say, this is how chapter eighty-seven says that this works and we'll put it into our ordinances so that it's.
Yeah, I mean, I think we could refer out what's the specific questions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe we, let's just refer the, the motion from the prior meetings to the tree warden and KP Law and ask for a response.
Specifically on the public one?
Yeah, the, the motions regarding sections.
Do we need to vote on that since it's something we already motioned on?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, those motions are on page six of the committee of the whole report from March eighth.
Would you refer those out? Can you just like CC me?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other discussion from the council or members of the public? Do I have?
So on the other two, on the tree committee and the private zoning ordinance, did we already do motions to refer? No. Okay.
So I think we talked about referring it to simultaneously to PDS, energy, environment, and then I guess share it with Trees Medford since, since they're I mean, we really refer to them since they're not
Yeah.
A body within the city, they're not under the city charter, but
Requests for comment.
Request for comments, yeah. So.
And then Director Hunt, did Director Hunt say he'd prefer it be referred to PDS and you can pass it to the energy and environment committee or, doesn't matter?
Literally, I think that if you refer to the energy committee, Clerk Curtis Bees will send it to me and I'll forward it to them. And so.
Okay, so it's kind of.
Yeah.
But, but it's, I think they appreciate that you're referring it to them for comment.
Okay.
And that you're referring it to the tree committee for comment. Like, they like it that you have actually asked them for comment.
Correct.
So, but we'll handle the logistics.
Okay.
Yeah.
So motion for Vice President Bears to refer to plant development and sustainability as well as the energy environment committee for comment. And also request comments from Trees Medford.
Yeah.
On the tree committee and the private trees.
Yes.
Draft.
Yeah. And I'd be happy to send them.
For plant development, sustainability for comment as well as to.
Energy Environment Committee. And then I don't know if we want to say request comments from Trees Medford since they're not
Yeah.
This official city committee, but their insight is also very important.
That makes sense.
Yes. So the draft ordinances, so the draft ordinance of the tree committee, the latest draft, which I can share back with you because we just made some slight adjustments to it as well as the private trees draft ordinance. And you want to add to that, Vice President Bears, just that those also be loaded to the Google Drive, right?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
So on the motion of Vice President Bears to refer this out to Energy Environment Committee, PDS, and also request comments from Trees Medford. So let's get this up on the website. Folks can see it. And this would just be that the tree committee establishment and the private trees ordinance. And I think we'll also get the public one up on the drive too. So if folks want to look at it. Seconded by Counsel Collins. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Counsel Kerryville, Counsel Kerryville on his absence. Counsel Collins. Counsel Knight, Counsel Scarpelli absent. Counsel Sank.
Yes.
President Roll.
Yes. Or in the affirmative, zero, and the negative three absent, the motion passes.
Motion to adjourn.
On the motion of Vice President Bears to adjourn, seconded by Counsel Collins. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Bears.
Yes.
Counsel Kerryville on his absence. Counsel Collins.
Yes.
Counsel Knight, Counsel Scarpelli absent. Counsel Sank.
Yes.
Yes. Or in the affirmative, zero, and the negative three absent, the motion passes, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.